Looks like you're totally out of technology.
Shall we go?
You want to pawn down the wall? We're gonna plug it in.
We are, uh, there's just not too many.
Oh, okay. It's nine o'clock. We'll call the October 2nd, 2018 Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call will show that all commissioners are present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of our Constitution and its one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item today is employee years of service recognition. Today, we're recognizing employees with anniversaries from January through June of 2018. Combined, these employees have 750 years of dedicated county service. Sharon Westhoff and I will now begin the presentation of the Years of Service Awards.
Good morning and welcome, everyone. Again, this morning, we will recognize employees and their longevity with Stearns County and providing exceptional public service. We will be taking photos, individual photos, as the certificates are presented this morning, and then group photos will be done in the rotunda after the program is complete. And we ask that you hold your applause until the end of each segment. So with that, we will begin with 10 years of service. Royce Deager. Sarah Byers. Mary Kader. Melissa Peters-Hogred. Those also celebrating 10 years of service who are unable to attend this morning include Thomas Koraleski, Keith Heitzman, Allison Dudek, Estella Dwell, Blair Nelson, and Jeremiah Heine. Let's give a round of applause for our 10 years. Moving on to 15 years, Gail Borchert. Janelle Kendall. Kimberly Weeks. Megan Camper. Don Wenderski. Those in the 15-year category who are unable to attend this morning include Lotta Hanson, Linda Triscoe, Michael Dreher, Patricia Kiebelbeck, Mark Maslinkowski, and John Neme. Let's give them a round of applause. Moving on to 20 years, Joanne Thielen. Gregory Bechtold. Steve Noner. Callan Hemisch. Those with 20 years of service unable to attend include Gregory Noel and Joel Roback. I'd like to recognize Janelle Kendall for her 15 years of service. Okay, moving on to 25 years of service, Suzanne Stenseth. Dan Blank. Robert Dickhouse. Congratulations to those individuals. With 25 years unable to attend, Dale Skidlarik, Dwayne Bregelmann, and Donna Mork. Moving on to 30 years, Brian Peters. Kathy Shaw. Cindy Wells. Big round of applause for those with 30 years of experience. Perfect timing to kick off our 40-year celebration. Goes to Mr. Donald Ramler, 40 years of service.
Geez, Jeff, I think he catch on.
Congratulations again, and thank all of you for your hard work here at Stearns County. And just a reminder, if you want to meet out in the rotunda area for a group picture, thank you for coming.
This started when you were four.
Oh, my goodness. Wow.
You know, I went to a father.
That's a long time.
He was quite an athlete.
Great, good baseball player.
We are now up to the Public Access Forum. Is there anyone here to speak at the Public Access Forum? Items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone for the Public Access Forum? Public Access Forum, seeing no one, we will go to the Consent Agenda Item C. Messrs., what are your wishes on the consent agenda?
I moved the Consent Agenda Item with a question on.
Okay, been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Schnatch?
The question is in regards to the judicial district lease. How does that determine, is there, do we do a study to figure out?
Which item are you looking at?
That's the first, what is it?
Number two. Oh, okay, number two.
And when they lease the space, is it done via like a study or?
Dr. Williams, I think that's your question.
Commissioner Schnatch, I wish Steve was here because he's the one that actually did it, but, yeah, we did look at what the market is in the area and kind of based that on what we feel the market is, and there's a little incremental increase throughout that five-year lease as well.
Is that what you've done in the prior, or what's?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Just a little recent, well, this is ongoing for now, but Great River Regional Library leases the library from the city of St. Cloud. The city owns a building. And we go through, and we're going through this market rate discussion. And my point is, is that when a, when a, an entity that doesn't pay taxes, the city, and the Great River Regional Library Board is leasing commercial space, you automatically, in my opinion, to be fair, you knock off $2.50 a square foot because neither one of them are taxed. You know, and we're having an adventure selling that over at City Hall, but that's how the story goes.
Commissioner, I had a discussion with Karen yesterday about that.
Oh, you did? See, great minds think in parallel.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye. Just one last thing, and I'm sorry, I should have said this too, but the state does that themselves, too. They also will kind of do a little market study on their own, so we've both come to the table with our own little market studies.
So if you don't reach agreement, where would they go?
Uh, they would, you know, need to find somewhere else, I guess. And another thing that we made sure was that they're, you know, they don't see that they will be adding another courtroom in the next five, to determine this lease, because if we did have to add a courtroom in the near future, that's probably the space we would want to use.
Okay.
Motion passed. At this time, we'll recess a regular county board meeting to conduct a human services board meeting. We have Melissa Huberty here, along with Becky Bells-Cramlett.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator. And the Human Services Department has two consent items today, which is on pages 124 and 126, items D1 and D2. I am available for questions.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. On our regular agenda today, I have with me Becky Bells-Cramlett, who's the Division Director of our Corrections, Community Corrections Division in the Human Services Department, and she's going to explain the Minnesota statewide pre-trial bail study initiative that we will be involved in soon.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
The purpose of being here is just to share some general statewide information that's going on, and then to provide some information on how that's going to impact us in Stearns County and what we'll be doing to be in line with that initiative going forward. The judicial branch put together a strategic plan a few years ago studying the release decisions at pre-trial, and they're looking for evidence-based tools to make judicial release decisions. This is before the person is convicted at their first appearance in court. With that, they formed multiple work groups. First, they studied what was going on around the state, and then from that time, they determined that we needed to be consistent and have an equitable, fair tool around the state to make those release conditions and make those release decisions, excuse me. Every county around the state of Minnesota will be using a very similar tool, where 85 of us are using the exact same one, and the Hennepin tool that had already been validated will be used in Hennepin County, as they'd already done a lot of work, but the tools look very similar. This tool is meant to ensure that the judges have the most predictive and least biased information before them, when they're making those release conditions, release decisions, excuse me. Obviously, prosecution and defense will still make argument at the release time in front of the court, but this tool will give them some information on the person's prior record, prior failures to appear, and other things that can help guide them on setting bail and release conditions at that time. This tool will be validated. After we start using this, the state court admin will be putting together a research team to validate the tool, to make sure it is effective and providing fair release information. The tool will want to make sure that, do these factors actual predict pre-trial failure? That means, does the person actually come back to court, or do they fail to appear? And does the person commit a new crime? They're also going to be making sure that there's no biases that are created by this tool, such as around race or gender. There is a statute that governs this. Right now, corrections departments around the state are required to do bail studies. That means, we currently have a couple of agents that come in in the morning, they gather information around the defendant's prior record, prior failures to appear, maybe employment, and we submit that information to the court and the prosecutor and the defense attorney prior to the first appearance in court. And this is all governed under statute for any crime of violence. Again, the goal for this tool, it's called the Minnesota Pre-Trial Assessment Tool, or we call it MPAT, I think we have acronyms for everything, guides those decisions for, should the judge release on their own recognizance, should they release on conditions or bail at that time. The factors that we'll be looking at will be, again, prior failures to appear in court, we'll be looking at employment, we'll be looking at residence stability, chemical use, and we'll also be looking at prior records, and these are prior convictions on their record. The goal is to make a recommendation to the court on the risk being low, moderate, or high, but that's the only recommendation probation makes. We do not talk about bail or anything like that, that's up to the judge to make those determinations. And again, our goal is to mitigate the implicit bias on any non-predictive factors. We won't be presenting information that is not considered validated to actually show a person's risk going forward, and to be consistent around the state. And finally, this, the goal will be to show that, give the judge the information they need, but the judge ultimately has judicial discretion. Research shows that objective pre-trial assessment, along with the judicial discretion, will give you the best outcomes for pre-trial defendants. We are required to begin using this tool here around the state prior to December of 2018. So we have begun starting some training, we'll be doing regional training around the state, so probation agents around the state have this training, and we'll be using this tool hopefully in November sometime, so we can get a little bit of practice before that December 1st deadline that comes up. With that, any questions or comments that you have for me today?
Anyone? Commissioner Merrick?
Thank you. Is there ever a time where, you know, there's these bail limits that we talked about in CJCC, is there ever a time where there, you know, the sky's the limit, I can't think of the right word, but where, what word am I looking for? The, if a suspect, you know, like, like the one in St. Cloud here where somebody turned themselves in and said that they killed someone, so is there a chance that there would be no bail, you know, is that?
I believe there are no bail limits on certain, on most felony offenses.
Bail limits, okay.
Correct, I believe there's no bail.
Is there ever a time where that's imposed?
No limit at all?
Right.
I, yes, I do believe that happens. I'm actually not current on some of these individual cases that are coming forward, but yes, I believe that does happen.
Okay, thank you.
It's pretty rare.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Say hi to Bev.
I will, thanks, Commissioner.
At this time, we're going to close the Human Services Board and reconvene the regular county board meeting. So we are up to Item F, which is Environmental Services, we have Shelley Benson and Angie Berg here.
Good morning, Commissioners, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, and Angie Berg. So we are on packet page 129, Item F1, and Angie is here to start that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The first item on our portion of the agenda is to approve the Planning Commission action for a rezoning application submitted by H&amp;L Partnership of Albany, and if approved, enact ordinance 579. The Stearns County Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 20th, 2018, and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning. This particular rezoning is approximately nine and a half acres located in Section 15 of Albany Township, and Albany Township also recommended approval of the rezoning. The findings of fact are listed in your packet.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
The next item is to consider the Planning Commission's recommended action on a rezoning submitted by Donald Hyde of Kimball, and if approved, enact ordinance number 580. This request is for four and a half acres in the A8 zoning district to be rezoned to R5. The property is located in Section 9, Main Prairie Township, adjacent to the city of Kimball, and Main Prairie Township also recommended approval of this request. The Planning Commission's recommendation was unanimous, and their findings of fact are listed in your packet.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last rezoning recommended by the Planning Commission on September 18th was submitted by John Griffin and Patricia Murphy, and if approved, enact ordinance number 581. This property is approximately 16 acres located in Wakefield Township. The property is currently zoned A40, and the recommendation is to R5. Again, the Planning Commission's recommendation was unanimous, and the findings of fact are listed in your packet.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
The last item on our agenda is to consider a Wakefield Township plat entitled CD Edition. This is a two-lot plat submitted by David Dingman of Cold Spring on behalf of DM Dingman Farms LLC. The property is approximately five acres, and it's a two-lot residential plat located in the A40 zoning district. Wakefield Township approved the preliminary on June 7th and the final on September 6th, and the Stearns County Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 19th, 2018, unanimously recommending approval with all of the conditions, and all of the conditions have been met.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we need the five-minute break that's on the schedule.
Shelley, I'd like to see you after the meeting.
However, Jody is not here yet, so maybe we'll, I think we'll take a five-minute break. Or let's do issues by Commissioners. What do you have? Commissioner Merrick?
Well, just the EMC District meeting coming up on Monday, October 22nd, in Morrison County, Little Falls.
Commissioner Schnatch?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Lenzweiler?
Yeah, yeah, a fellow that spent 20 years in our sheriff's office, Bob Gunkel, Vietnam veteran, was having post-traumatic stress syndrome issues quite some time ago, and his therapist suggested that when these episodes took place, that he write them down and explain essentially to himself what he remembered from these individual episodes. Well, he did that for 18 years, and the result is a book called Walking Point, and it's about his one-year about his one-year experience during the Vietnam War and the whole, does a real good job of explaining the political and cultural things that were taking place at the time, and certainly the military aspects of it. I went to a book signing a week ago Friday and bought a book, you know, be a nice guy. At the time of the decision, I lacked sincerity, but the joke's on me. I got home and I started reading this about eight o'clock on a Friday night. I didn't stop until 2:30 in the morning, got up the next, on Saturday morning, said to hell with everything that I had planned for Saturday and finished the book. So it's, I got done at 8:30 in the evening. So joke's on me, Walking Point. You can, if you check it out on Amazon, it's there, it's nineteen bucks, and it's a hell of a read. Good job, Bob. He was our jail administrator for, I don't know, maybe 15 years of a 20-year career.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Notch?
One other thing, I'm not sure if anybody's going to the transportation meeting tomorrow morning?
Jody will be there, and I will be there too.
Okay.
With that, I feel I should put in a plug for another local author, Michael Mauer on a sartel. Wrote a book called Perfume River Nights, and that's about his Vietnam experiences also, so it's quite good. I see Jody is still not here. We shall take...
Just under issues, Commissioner Merrick brought up the AMC District meeting. One of the things that AMC was asking for each county to come with what their top legislative priority is, so if you read that email, they have, coming out of the last AMC policy meetings, they have three of each committee's top legislative priorities. I thought if we could use that and somehow give an indication, maybe we could do that at our next meeting, of what we want to say, what is our top legislative issue, so...
Anyone else? Rand? We're going to take a five-minute break.